All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you please read the robe?
Mr. Bosin.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Mrs. Jewen.
Here.
Thank you. All right. If you would please join me in a moment of silence, that'll be great. Thank you. All right. Thank you. The pledge this evening will be led by Councilmember Jonathan Greider.
If you'll join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Amos, for bringing it up on the rear, too.
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. The amendment is to remove from the consent agenda 1A6 and also to approve the minutes of the December 7, 2020, regular session as proposed.
Thank you. All right. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, thank you. We have, Kelly, do we have anyone wishing to speak right now?
We have Reverend Dr. Mary Robinson.
All right. Pastor Robinson, state your name and address for the record and let us know what's on your mind.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me, Mayor?
Yes, we sure can.
Okay, great. Yes, Reverend Dr. Mary Robinson. I'm pastor of the All Nations Community Church 321 Normandy Street here in the city. And I rise to speak with you, first of all, good evening to everyone. And I rise to speak and share some of my concerns about the the treatment, if you will, of the Waterloo Human Rights Commission when they executed a petition last month. And I'm reminded that if I keep silent, then that kind of makes me a coward when I feel that there should be voices made. And so I don't ever want to be called a coward. And so I'm concerned about the economy of those who volunteer their time by serving this city when there is something that may not be agreeable to everyone else or to certain groups, then that they come under what I feel was undue criticism. Several, some Waterloo City Council members criticized them for the petition. The petition had to do, of course, with the Griffin, which many in our community, especially of African-American descent, feels that it heavily resembles the KKK dragon and invokes feelings of fear and distrust of law enforcement. And the fact that it was decided during a turbulent time in our nation's history doesn't help at all with that. And I understand that not only did the commission do petitions, but also the police department did their own petition. But I'm concerned about the treatment of those who have agreed to be servants to help make our city better. They spoke out about their feelings and instituted this petition. And I'm just keeping in mind, please, Mayor and Council, that commissioners are expected to leave. They are volunteers, like I volunteer on different boards and commissions. And I'm expected to not be a voice for a particular agency, but I am expected to utilize my independent judgment and to do what's best. The commission is charged with enforcing human rights ordinances and fair housing ordinance. It investigates complaints to determine whether they're discriminatory, files suits and uses enforcement powers in whatever way it's deemed permissible by law. In other words, the commission's role is one of advocacy. And inherently flowing from this advocacy is the certainty that one or more individuals or groups may not like what they're advocating. Commissioners are expected to give a lot of their time volunteering, no money for this, to be in service. But they do that to strengthen community awareness. And in this particular instance, strengthen community awareness on a human rights issue. And so rather than showing appreciation for their efforts, even if we disagree, I really felt that some of the comments that were made, that this was a wrench thrown into the system by one of our own departments. The commissioners are not a department. The commissioners are not staff. They are volunteer citizens there to do what they think is best. And they call it totally inappropriate because someone doesn't like the timing and that the commissioners are there to support. If the council does, I'm not so sure about that. They are there to exercise their independent judgment. They're not staff. And whether they like it or not, that's their role. I'm reading direct quotes. And that every department has done that with the exception of this one. And what they did was sneaky, was done sneakily. As a volunteer, I'm giving up my time away from my family and time that I could be doing. Who knows what I could be doing? And to have these kinds of things said, because I may not like the issue, Mayor and Council, to me, that was disturbing. I feel that in this particular instance, the commission, obviously, they were exercising what they were called to do by law.
All right. Pastor, we reached five minutes plus.
All right. And so my conclusion is that, in my opinion, that the actions that were taken by them were clearly within their proper role to do that. And that's it.
All right. Thank you, Pastor. Is there anyone else that would like to make comment from our public? Council, any comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bosin.
Thank you, sir. I just, I did, I had two different comments. And my first one, I wanted to ask Chief Fitzgerald. I understand that we had testing this weekend for new police recruits. And it would be possible for him to give us an update on numbers and how the testing went this weekend.
All right, Chief.
Yeah, I'm sorry about the picture here, but it went well. We, we had a little over, I should say, under 25 people show, about 14 passed the test and are ready to move to the next phase. We do have, we had quite a few people fail parts of the physical, which was a little disappointing. But we do have a, you know, a solid number of folks to move forward. And our hope is that out of the 14 or so that we have now, we can, you know, pull together enough people that can, you know, pass the next portions of this background process and be able to be viable candidates. So I'll keep the council, if you like, Mr. Bosin, abreast of it on a week-to-week basis and let you know how we're making out.
I would really appreciate that. Thank you, sir. And my next thing I just wanted to bring up, Mr. Mayor, is that I know that the city is just beginning contract negotiations. And Councilman, I can't speak for Councilman Foyce, but we did express our desire at the last budget session, not to pay Eilers and Cooley to have someone sit here every time we have budget meetings, especially in a, in a, the ability to Zoom, the ability to, to call a legal question. And I was just hoping that that got expressed from our budget meeting last year, that, that in order to try to help us save money, I truly think our Human Resource Director would do a fine job negotiating for us. And if he had any legal questions, he could be sure would be able to call down in Des Moines. And that, those are the expressions that Mr. Foyce and I had last January during budget sessions. That's all.
Yeah, I have to say to that one, I don't remember direct directive from council saying, don't talk to Eilers or don't have our HR director communicate, communicate with them and with their negotiations. Ultimately, it's all of you that are going to vote yea or nay. But, yeah, that portion I didn't remember. But I'll communicate with HR Director about your concerns.
Sure. We didn't say not to communicate with Eilers and Cooley. We, we had an issue with paying to have a representative drive, paying door time and mileage to have a representative drive up from Des Moines, sit in on the negotiations, and then pay to have him drive back when, when some of these things could be answered on Zoom or some of these things could be, could be answered at a much lesser cost, even with a phone call. That's what we expressed at the, at the budget meetings. We didn't say not to use or utilize Eilers and Cooley. We just asked to try to cut some of those expenses down by not having a representative there on all of our negotiations.
All right, Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. Well, before that, I, I wish everybody happy holidays and I hope everybody stays healthy through this trying time into New Year 2021. But today in our work session, we had a handout on Waterloo PD letterhead sent to us. And I read it over and immediately noticed something that is disturbing. And I called the city clerk, asking some questions. But on that letterhead, not only is this green-eyed monster at the top of it, and it's referred to that by some members in our community, but also at the bottom of that letterhead is the phrase, "Genuine relationships inspire future friendships in neighborhoods." Okay? I'd never seen that before, and I've been on council seven years. And the first letters in each of those words, not only was capitalized, but also bold-faced. So that, what does it do? It spells out the acronym or becomes an acronym, spelling the word Griffin. Okay, so when I talked to the city clerk and asked her to do some research, she got back to me. And thank you, Kelly Felkley, for that. That phrase was only added to the letterhead since the Griffin became an issue, which, as you recall, was in early June up to the present time. And my question is, why not something more appropriate that was not so controversial, such as community policing, creating neighborhoods and city relations? No, somebody there, either in the police department or somebody who is supportive of the Griffin, which everybody has a right to their own opinion, decided to put or to make up a phrase that would spell out as an acronym the word Griffin, which is controversial and has been controversial for the last five and a half months. To me, that's hypocritical, inflammatory, and damaging to our community relations. So rhetorically, I say, did this change receive mayoral approval before it was put or attached? Was there a cost associated with changing this? Who created it? And was the rebrand committee or the Human Rights Commission or the Neighborhood Services Coordinator informed of this? I'm asking that that phrase be removed and replaced with something that is not controversial. After all, the Waterloo Police Department is a city department and serves all of the public. The Waterloo PD is not a private entity, serving their own interests, but the interest of everyone in our community. Remove this phrase and put a phrase more befitting and acceptable to all in our community. Secondly, Mr. Mayor, I became aware here in the last week that one of my council members, every, we all have a right to our opinion, which I'm expressing right now in oral comments. But one of these council members praised the obnoxious, divisive, and nasty Courier cartoon as spot-on and that those who were seeking Griffin removal as being ignorant. I find that being despicable, appalling, and I would ask that person to apologize to our community. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. First, first item on there. Chief, do you, the, the Griffin acronym, was that part of a beginning education program to try to help people understand? Or is that part of your mission vision? Because we know that's changed. But do you want to talk about that portion of it?
Mayor, I, I sure would address it. Obviously, it's, you know, when I first got here, you know, I tasked the, the officers within the department to come up with an acronym that stood and aligned with the mission, vision, values, and guiding principles of the organization. So I take, you know, umbrage to the effect that Mr. Morrissey has asserted that he's never seen it before because in packets that were given to council, when I first got here, that information was attached to those packets, the logo and the explanation of the mission, vision, values, and acronym. So, you know, I don't want to be the political football kicked around in an open council meeting when that was information that was provided earlier. I don't do so to be divisive. I certainly am not a racist. And I'm not someone that is, you know, again, placed in the position where I am trying to push something in one direction or another. That was the symbol. It did not entail, as Mr. Morrissey knows, no additional cost to move around things on Microsoft Word. And again, I take offense to the fact that I'm being now, I guess, placed into a position where it makes it seem as if I'm trying to take one side or another or to damage relationships with the city or the community. I think that's a very dangerous position, position to put a police department in and the police chief. I also think that if there were a problem, that he could have reached out to me. I've reached out to him and I've not received any kind of phone call or conversation. As a matter of fact, I haven't had a conversation after, I should say, beside the initial conversation that I had when I was hired with. I really would love to sit down and discuss positions on certain things. I think we'd agree on more things than we disagree. But I have not been given that opportunity. So I would relish the fact to sit down and to speak with them. I'd also like to reinforce that I gave that to my police officers to, to make a or to come up with an acronym that reflected their views on community policing and how entrenched they should be within the community. And they voted on that. I realize that the commission, I should say, the committee was put together after this and that, you know, the patch will change. I understand that. But as of the time that this was put together, none of that was in motion.
Thank you, Chief. Mrs. Klein.
My colleague was directing those remarks right at me. He says we have a right to our opinion, but apparently it's only when it's in total agreement with his opinion. I am proud of our policemen and women, our honest, hard-working, loyal policemen and women who every day go out there and put their lives on the line. I thought that the Waterloo Courier's cartoon was spot-on because it indicated that for some people in this world we live in today, it will never be enough. You can pretend that a Griffin is a dragon and get by with that, apparently. You can pretend many things and get by with it, but it's not true. A Griffin is not a dragon. A Griffin has not now nor never has been used by the KKK. It's been a dragon that has had that, that terrible misfortune. I stand by the remarks of the Courier, strangely enough, because Lord knows I have been in arguments with the Courier before. But I stand by my opinion. I support our police. I think sometimes nothing will be enough. No matter what we put on that page, it's never going to be enough because I think that some people are offended by the very fact that police exist. And they do, and they are for our betterment. And I, for one, am proud of them. And I'm proud of the Griffin.
All right. Normally, I don't chime in, but I want to speak directly to that Courier piece, not even to Mrs. Klein's comments, not even to Mr. Morrissey's comments. But I think that piece and that picture and the fact that compromise is looked at as a dirty word. When we take a look at national politics that take place across this country, we see that the ability for council members to be able to talk with one another, to work with one another, to come from different sides on differing views, has been cheapened by that Courier picture. I believe that the Courier has basically disrespected the concerns of people that may not necessarily agree. So whether it was on the side of keeping or whether it was on the side of removing, we cannot allow the Courier and other media outlets to cheapen the council, the mayor, and all of our ability to be able to work together on behalf of the citizens that live here. And sometimes people may feel that they are losers. Sometimes people may feel that they are winners. But our ability to listen to those that may not have had a voice, to be able to express their opinions, I think it's, I think the Courier did us a disservice. And with regards to our police department, they play an incredible role within our community. And we're seeing the efforts from Chief Fitzgerald and our, our service people in blue and how hard they are working to try to engage and come together. We've even seen community members stepping up, trying to solve some of the problems and the challenges that we have every day like we've never seen before. And so I am pissed off that the feelings of people were degraded by the Courier, who's supposed to at least have people's voices on there. And I think it was a cheap shot at the city of Waterloo. They want to put something in the paper, talk about the incredible service that our police department are doing. Talk about some of the heroes in our marginalized communities that are stepping up every day to try to make an incredible difference in this community. Talk about where our city council is working together to try to solve some of these issues and don't cheapen the feelings of people. So more so, the comments between council, you can have those, but I'm talking directly to the Courier, who I've respected for so many years. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Jewen.
Yeah, I want to take your comments and maybe expand on them a little bit. As you know, when that cartoon came out, I was livid. I'm not sure that I've been as disappointed and angered by seeing anything in the paper as I was by seeing that cartoon. And has nothing to do for me, what really infuriated me was not which side of the Griffin issue you're on. That we're going to work through, and I continue to ask people to give the committee patience for that. But what infuriated me so bad was their assault on compromise, as if compromise is a bad word. And I will tell you, in my entire career and working with 50-some cities and six counties, as well as state and federal, the only way we get something done is by good souls on both sides of issues coming together and finding a compromise. So please don't belittle compromise. You need to respect it. And in my estimation, it's the only way we get anything done. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Greider.
So I'm going to echo some of those comments. You know, I was thinking about bringing this cartoon up last week, but I was, I was very mad about it because regardless of how you feel, and we, we all were there. We had an extraordinarily long meeting hearing from both sides that were fairly represented in this council and in the public about how they felt about the police insignia and what it means to some members of this community and their family and the tradition of service in their family and some members of this community and what it means to grow up as a person of color in Waterloo and what that patch means. And for the Courier, which is supposed to be a nonpartisan, unbiased source of information to come in and essentially infantilize the feelings of people who feel that they are unheard, who feel that a significant portion of what the city does doesn't accurately and fairly represent them and that, that we are trying to come together and compromise and to do what's right and what is just in a time when we have seen governments devolve into contests about who can be the most partisan, who can be the most intractable, and who can be the least helpful. I really found it appalling that, that this sort of cartoon would play, that this sort of cartoon would receive some support in certain quarters because of how people feel. We heard lots of feelings that night, feelings for the Griffin, feelings against the Griffin. But for, for any institution that's supposed to present us with the facts to infantilize and downgrade people's feelings simply because someone somewhere doesn't agree with them is really unconscionable and it's really out of line. And I, I think it's part of the reason why people really question these institutions because if I saw that, and as, as someone who feels this way about the Griffin and wanting it to if I saw that and as, as someone who feels this way about the Griffin and wanting it to be transitioned out, I felt, well then, I guess the courier's taking a side, so why should I, why should I continue with the courier? Uh, you know, news is supposed to provide us with information so that we can make decisions. They're not supposed to make judgment calls, and that felt like a judgment call and a bad one on their part.
Thank you. Ms. June.
I, no, I, I agree with everything he said.
No, you want to close.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you was wanting me to talk some more. Okay, make a motion to close oral presentations, receive comments, and place on file.
Second. Second. Motion has been made with a second. All in favor?
I, I.
Close. Oral presentations closed.
Mayor, I'd make a, a motion to approve the consent agenda um, with a couple changes or additions in 1A1 bill payment. Um, add the amount of three million, six hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. Receive, approve, and place on file. And again, the consent agenda as amended with the removal of 1A6.
Second.
Second. The motion has been made with a second. Council conversation. I'd like to, if there's none, I'd like to add on. Number three is a game changer for the city of Waterloo. The ability for us to be able to go into homes. Uh, not only does it help improve uh, quality of life and life safety for residents, it also transitions into economic development as well through housing improvements, which means uh, increasing the value overall of your home. So I want to thank uh, community development for their hard work uh, and making this a reality. Uh, number four, I want to ask Noel a question. How quickly can they get over there? Because half of that thing is open right now, and I know we have tape around it. But that joker needs to go like immediately. Did I say Joker?
Noel.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. Um, I'll find out if they filed the DNR ten-day requirement yet. Um, that's pretty hard to get around. Um, but we have been in dis, I know they've been in discussion with the DNR and our staff has as well, so I'll, I'll get you that answer tomorrow, Mayor.
Thank you.
Obviously, we know it needs to come down as quickly as possible.
Yeah, yeah. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Mr. Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. June.
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. Uh, could someone take um, two through four?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yeah, uh, before I say anything, I just wanted to uh, tell you and everybody else, thank you for the net decrease of two hundred, three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and eleven cents in the consent agenda. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, and, and I forgot to tell you too, uh, may I hope I'm not out of place, but uh, happy birthday, I believe.
Yeah, I'm twenty-nine today, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Wait a minute, thirty-nine, Jack Benny. Well, boy, that dates me. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the following resolutions. First of all, approving the Convention of Visitors Bureau Board Recommendations for Funding a Hotel Motel Mini Grant Application for the twenty-twenty fifty-fifty bowling tournament in the amount of three thousand dollars. Next is approving the resolution for uh, of professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Incorporated of Waterloo, the amount not to exceed fifty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars for construction-related services in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one East Shawless Road Trail Extension Phase Two Project Contract Number uh, one zero one two, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document. And then the last one, number four, is resolution approving and accepting a permanent easement with Lost Island Real Estate LC for construction of a public warning coven located at forty-five fifty S Road, and authorizing Mayor City Clerk to execute said document.
Second.
Second. The motion has been made uh, with a second. Uh, I don't see anyone slated to speak on this item, but is there anyone uh, in cyberspace or the phone that wants to speak to these three items? All right, uh, council.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Yeah, could we get our elf on the shelf to give us some information on the Convention of Visitors Bureau Board?
Uh, elf.
So, uh, yeah, so this tournament, uh, this tournament is slated, it was originally slated to be uh, during twenty-twenty, obviously. Uh, that wasn't possible, so uh, they, they moved the date up. This is a senior uh, uh, bowling tournament uh, over in Cadillac Lanes. Uh, not a huge, traditionally, you know, in a lot of our events, we see um, you know, a hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars uh, worth of economic impact, but at this time, um, given how difficult it is to find any hotel overnights, um, finding a, a hundred uh, over a weekend is going to be really impactful. So uh, for that reason, then we're, we're making the recommendation here for, for three thousand.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall, and keep up the good work.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Fine.
Yes.
Your voice.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. June.
Yes.
And Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Could someone take uh, five and six?
Mr. Mayor.
This is um, Klein.
Number five is a resolution approving a development agreement with Lock Realty Inc. in conjunction with, with a ten-thousand square foot expansion at forty-one forty Kimball Avenue with a new taxable value of three million, five hundred eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars and including five years at fifty percent tax rebates and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And number six is a resolution approving the first of two, two payments to Grow Cedar Valley in the amount of fourteen thousand, two hundred fifty dollars for the base amount and fifty-six thousand in incentive funds for a total of seventy thousand, two hundred fifty dollars in conjunction with fiscal year twenty-twenty-one economic development.
Second.
The motion has been made with a second. Um, Kelly, do we have a comment that needs to be read in?
Yes, we do. Um. On agenda item number six, we had a comment from David Dryer. Um, he wrote that the city is proposing entering into a new agreement with GCV subject to seventy thousand, two hundred fifty. He requested to receive by email and accounting in detail how much GVC has helped the city monetarily, jobs created, et cetera, that can't be attributed to anything or any other department efforts. We citizens need justification on this large of an expenditure, much less any money spent on our behalf.
Thank you. All right, and I have, uh, I think Lisa Scoobal is on the line from Grow Cedar Valley.
Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you. Uh, Carrie Daras joining me as well. And uh, we can provide you that in, we talked at the last council meeting when we gave an update and uh, uh, Mrs. Klein, we certainly uh, we're, we're still putting that together, but we're very close. I did share it with Noel uh, just for him to look at to see if it's, if he can understand it, then I think I would uh, here in the next day that I could share it with you, all you folks. But what it does is over the la, she's laughing. Uh, but over the last three years, we've reported out twice a year on the projects we work with, but also those that close. So within those individual projects, we've shared how many jobs were created, a capital investment, square feet built or being renovated. But uh, what we've prepared for you uh, to Mrs. Klein's point is a compilation over the last three years of what the economic impact is to the city of Waterloo and the Cedar Valley in general. So that's, that's the data we'll be providing you here soon. Uh, I would say here in the next day or so. Uh, so you will get that. We want to make sure that it's accurate and correct because we do recognize that it'll be a public document. Uh, when we did receive that information and we're looking at it for a council update, we had to first create one for the metro area that included uh, the metro area cities. But we immediately, once we were satisfied with that document and did our proofreading, proofreading for our investors and our board, we quickly went uh, to uh, se, uh, figuring out the impact that we've contributed to uh, the city of Waterloo. So we wanted to get that done right away because uh, Mrs. Klein was looking for it.
Um, one, one comment though, uh, it, it'll be, you know, it'll be very, when you don't understand the role, it's very hard to separate because there's no project, there's not a project that you don't work on, that you don't contact, you know, the Economic Development Office or contact my office. So just when you're creating that into Mr. Dryer's point, you have to understand because as Grow Cedar Valley, you can't just come in and negotiate a deal and not have uh, the planning office included in that conversation. You know, and then there's also other, other pieces of that. When we take a look at that twenty-four-seven Wall Street report and we take a look at some of the leadership on bringing our uh, business community together, when we take a look at my asking Carrie and Dr. Nafisa to put together a roundtable discussion with hundreds of uh, business people in our local Cedar Valley to talk about how we can all work together with regards to COVID. When on Sunday, I send Lisa an email asking for uh, data on our metro area uh, and she works to get us uh, that data or Carrie, you, you guys partnering with uh, the Minority Accelerator. So there's also many fronts that may not be tallied um, that council and public needs to know, but it's very hard for, to put in something where we actually didn't partner on that. It's nearly impossible, but um, any other council, I'm sorry, I took over. Questions, council, anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Klein.
Lisa, I didn't want you to think I was laughing. I was acknowledging, it's so hard on Zoom because I can't be there to look at you. I was smiling to acknowledge that I saw you and was listening and hope you didn't think I was laughing at you. Um, yes, I, I'm glad you're, you're doing that, that job. That's a hard job and I have very much respect for Grow Cedar Valley. I really do. But I, I would like us to try sometimes to see where we're at like that and hopefully prior to the vote, but it's okay. I, I very much see what Grow Cedar Valley does and accomplishes and I'm, I'm very proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mrs. Klein.
Thank you, sir. I had uh, uh, Mr. Anderson an email because you know, because it's a thousand dollars incentive for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of, of assessed value. And we're talking about eleven point five million dollar addition. And my question was, is what was Grow Cedar Valley's role in securing the addition, the, the addition to, to uh, justify this type of an incentive? And, and he was real forthcoming with me and, 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 and explained to me that this whole thing started a long time ago and it's, it's a long process that, that Grow Cedar Valley works with, with, with our, our uh, economic development and, and uh, group. And if, if, if uh, Lisa would like to expand on it, I mean, he, he, he did do a nice job in his email. Uh, he did give me your number. I, I'm comfortable with what he got back to me, but could you expand on a little bit on, on the, on how long of a process this has been with, with uh, control?
Uh, sure, glad to. Thank you, uh, Mr. Bowzen. And first of all, Margaret, Margaret, I, um, Mrs. Klein, I wasn't thinking that you were laughing at me. I thought when I said that I sent it to Noel for him to comprehend it before I sent it to you, I thought you were laughing at Noel.
Yeah, because Noel can get it. We can all understand it.
I assume anytime someone's laughing, it's at me, so we're good.
Okay, anyway, keep going.
Well, a, a, anyway, uh, it is, uh, Mayor, to your point, it is a true partnership. Uh, we couldn't do it ourselves without the city's support because you hold a lot, you help, you hold the property and the local incentives and what we try to do is fill any gaps and uh, be an advocate for the company and the project, particularly our existing businesses. So uh, in early two thousand and fourteen, we, as you know, we do existing business visits. I was doing one, I think it was in February, actually, of two thousand and fourteen with Fred LePole. And during the routine questions about, do you have any expansion plans? He said, we are looking for a future expansion plan. So after that meeting uh, end of March, uh, I arranged a follow-up meeting that included Noel and I went back out there with him just to discuss at a high level of what his plans would look like. And he was talking at about a hundred and fifty thousand square feet in the future. Uh, while that conversation continued, and in two thousand and sixteen, Noel and members of his team and someone from Mars at that time went out to East Moline, Illinois, where uh, Fred said that we're going to have exactly the same building here in uh, Waterloo that he wanted to do. And so these were all the problems that we had and Noel and the rest of the city staff, they were quick to say, we'll get it done. We'll figure it out. No problem. Anyway, it kind of uh, changed a little bit along the way. In mid-two thousand and seventeen, we were reached out by a uh, CBRE, a real estate group out of Chicago on behalf of their unidentified OEM client looking to site a hundred and fifty thousand square feet in northeast Iowa. They called the project, Project Blackhawk. Uh, so based on the requirements, and actually CBR came out, uh, to Waterloo Cedar Falls in August of two thousand and seventeen. So their ask of us is to look at sites that met that criteria, both in Waterloo Cedar Falls. And so we facilitated the meetings and visit like we always do in our role at Grow Cedar Valley. Uh, they were looking at that time, the OEM wanted to hire a developer that would not only build a facility but own it. They did pick a developer. I think in Noel's email, he identified the developer. After they started uh, uh, working on uh, what the cost would be, it turns out that it just really did make sense for this developer and uh, the OEM to proceed. So in two thousand and eight, uh, control, Fred called Noel and said, we're ready to proceed. We're going to own the building. We're going to partner up with our contractor. He'll have some ownership in it. And so moving forward, uh, in February two thousand and nineteen, uh, our office, right, reached out to Fred and his partner, uh, Kevin Colner to see if uh, tied, ended up by whether they would apply or uh, interested in IED, a sales tax credits for new construction. So after some discussion, it was, it turned out that they weren't uh, able to qualify or weren't interested in the project. And then we continued to, because we uh, talk regularly with Noel, uh, we're uh, watching through the process of all the city uh, P and Z meetings and council. And then we vocally uh, supported the project. Uh, and I don't have the date for that, when there was some voice concerns by residents on Noel Street that were, were the traffic, traffic would uh, uh, try to take a shortcut through the residential areas on Noel Street. So conversations with Councilman Amos and Mayor Hart, who were able to successfully work the residents and control to resolve, delay the project a bit, but I, I, I think it was a win-win in the way it came out. So I'll stop there, Mayor.
All right. Uh, council, any other questions on five and six? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Morrissey.
Yes.
Mrs. Klein.
Yes.
Mr. Voice.
Yes.
Mr. Greider.
Yes.
Mrs. June.
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen.
Yes.
And Mr. Amos.
Yes.
Right, thank you. Um, number seven, please.
Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
I'd like to make a motion to a, to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time in ordinance, amending ordinance number five zero seven nine as amended city of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending official zoning map referred to in section ten dash four dash four. Approving a rezone of certain property from R one and two family residents to R three RP planned multiple resident district with conditions located at one forty-six Martin Road.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Um, I know we have um, Mr. Bullerman here, but does anyone have any questions about this project at all for Mr. Bullerman or anyone? Well, um, if you give me just a couple seconds, I don't normally talk as much during the meetings, but also this is another uh, example. Um, this project was supported by Leisure Services. It's been supported by the council. But when you read the article, it made it seem as the council, oh, delaying the project or not doing something by the headline. Uh, this to me uh, is a fantastic development that passed all the marks by meeting with Paul and Leisure, meeting with all the different places they needed to. So um, you know, just to let folks know, this was, this project has um, been supported unlike uh, the way it was kind of um, unlike the way it was kind of presented in the paper. So if there's no other questions, I'll do a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Noel, has there been any other comments? I know counsel was kind of waiting this, you know, this past week to see if there's any other petitions or something like that that has come in.
Well, Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, the planning staff did not receive any additional emails or contacts.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Mrs. Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
And Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Thank you. Someone take number eight?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Foyce?
I would like to make a motion to receive, file, consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing chapter four, City Council of Title One Administration in its entirety and in acting in lieu thereof, a new chapter for Mayor and City Council of Title One Administration.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk, I think I want to acknowledge for the record that Mr. David Dreyer had reached out and said he's absolutely against this. So I want to make sure we have his, his, another one of his no's to be recorded. So.
Yeah. Do you want me to read his email?
Sure.
Okay, I got it right here. I'm prepared this time. From David Dreyer, I do my business in person, so since I'm not allowed in the chamber right now, one of you, please read this into the record so those listening will know. David Dreyer has registered with the council via email his opposition to two meetings a month and not being able to speak unless registered with the city clerk at any meeting. He has stated before the same opposition that passing this proposed change to Title One extremely limits a citizen's ability to voice their concerns. Voicing them in person lets the listeners know and hear. He feels this action will mostly eliminate communication from the citizens to their elected officials. Passage of this proposed change will not improve communication for the city of Waterloo.
All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Dreyer. Is there anyone else in cyberspace that would like to speak? Counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey?
Well, Mr. Mayor, first of all, when this was given to us, the attachment, there was an explanation under recommended action. And there were parts of that that were not correct. But I'm not going to go there for the sake of time because I have a series of several amendments that I wish to make at this point in time.
You want to do them one at a time or you want to do them all?
Yes, one at a time. It will take some time too, Mr. Mayor.
How, how, was, how many amendments do you have?
Nineteen to possibly 24.
And these were amendments that you weren't able to get us because some parts of this, I think you, you helped write it, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor.
Now you have 19 amendments?
At least 19, yes. And I'd like to begin, so.
You, you, you got, you got, you got about 10 minutes. So let's go.
No, I, I, each one of these is an item into itself, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it and we'll vote on it. Let's go.
Okay, so the First Amendment is 1 dash 4 dash 7, parentheses C, and that is a motion to delete the sixth sentence in its entirety and replace with the words, the city council work session members may, comma, by consensus of those present, move discussion slash work session agenda items forward to a full council regular meeting for deliberation and vote, quotes, period.
All right, so that motion has been, that amendment to that portion has been made. Do we have a second? All right. What's your second one, Mr. Morrissey?
Okay, so that did not receive a second.
Correct.
Okay, so it dies for lack of a second. Okay, the Second Amendment is 1 dash 4 dash 7, parentheses C, parentheses, motion to delete in the seventh and eighth sentences, the word motions and replace with consensus declarations.
All right. That is an amendment that has been made on the floor. Do we have a second? All right, dies for lack of second.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I want you to realize and want the council to realize that work sessions are not regular meetings and you cannot make motions or take actual votes. The Third Amendment that I am bringing forward is 1 dash 4 dash 7, parentheses D, and that is in the first sentence, delete the word shell and replace it with the word may.
All right, so that is another amendment. Do we have a second? All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. That one dies for a second.
So the Fourth Amendment is 1 dash 4 dash 8, standing committees of the council. And I make a motion to add, to add 1 dash 4 dash 8, parentheses to other, and it states, other committees as designated by the mayor are voted on by the city council.
All right. That is a motion for that amendment. Do we have a second? All right, that one dies for lack of second.
Well, I hope my fellow council members are looking over these and seeing how appropriate they are for the areas that I'm making these amendments. The Fifth Amendment that I'm submitting is 1 dash 4A dash 2, and it's a motion to add the sentence, quotes, any decision is subject to an appeal with the proper second. And I would ask council to look at how that applies in that case.
All right, so we have that amendment out. Do we have a second? Dies for a lack of second.
Sixth Amendment is 1 dash 4A dash 10, and that's a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 10, parentheses C, parentheses, by deleting three minutes and replacing that with five minutes in both sentence one and sentence two.
All right, that amendment has been made. Do we have a second? That one fails for a lack of a second.
Is everybody else on mute, Mr. Mayor?
It was made, you just didn't have a second, Mr. Morrissey.
Okay, okay. The next one is the Seventh Amendment, 1 dash 4A dash 10, and it's a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 10, parentheses C, by adding the sentence, quotes, such request shall not be unreasonably denied, quotes.
All right, unreasonably denied. Do we have a second? It fails for a lack of second.
Okay, the Eighth Amendment is 1 dash 4A dash 11, and it is a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 11A first sentence by deleting 1 dash 4A dash 13, parentheses A, parentheses, parentheses two, and, and replacing it with 1 dash 4A dash 14, parentheses A, parentheses two, and the third sentence by deleting all words after the comma.
Delete all words after the comma?
Yes.
All right. Counsel, do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I do want people and Kelly to realize that if you don't approve this, your ordinance has to be rewritten because it would be incorrect, as written.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey.
Okay. Number, the Ninth Amendment is 1 dash 4A dash 11, a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 11A, the last sentence by deleting it in its entirety. And that is, these materials should not be utilized during the regular meeting, but may be included in the regular meeting agenda packet. That's what I'm asking, to be deleted, that sentence.
All right. That request from Mr. Morrissey again. Do we have a second? All right, the most dies for a second.
Tenth Amendment is 1 dash 4A dash 11, a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 11B by deleting the last sentence in its entirety and adding, quotes, the council member shall be given sufficient time and latitude for presentation of that council member's agenda item, keeping said presentation germane and informative to that item.
All right. Do we have a second? All right, fails for a second.
The Eleventh Amendment proposed by me is 1 dash 4A dash 13, a motion to amend by striking the word, quotes, physically, quotes.
All right, to striking those words. Do we have a second? It fails for a lack of second.
Okay, Twelfth Amendment proposed is one, dealing with 1 dash 4A dash 14, and it's a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 14A by adding 1 dash 4A dash 14A2, and this merely adds A2 as it's not there in the proposed ordinance.
All right. For that amendment, counsel, do you have a second? Right, that.
Mr. Mayor, the Thirteenth Amendment is 1 dash 4A dash 13, a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 18B in the third sentence by deleting the word, from the word second and replacing from there on with the phrase and slash or third readings of an ordinance may be suspended so the council may proceed with final adoption of the ordinance at its first or second reading. Mr. Mayor, I have to clear up that language.
All right. Is there a second? That fails for a second.
Mr. Mayor, Fourteenth requested, proposed amendment is dealing with 1 dash 4A dash 19, a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 19D by deleting the wording, quotes, section 1 dash 4A dash 13A, parentheses two, and replacing it with 1 dash 4A dash 14, parentheses A, parentheses two.
All right, that amendment was made. Do we have a second? That one fails for lack of a second.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add to that. That is to correct language is incorrect in the ordinance that this council evidently hopes to pass.
Right.
Next is the Fifteenth Amendment, 1 dash 4A dash 32, a motion to amend 1 dash 4A dash 32, parentheses A, parentheses, by deleting the end of the first sentence after the word minutes and deleting in its entirety the second sentence.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Morrissey. That amendment has been made. Is there a second, counsel? It fails for a second.
Mr. Mayor, the Sixteenth Amendment is dealing with 1 dash 4A dash 33, and it is a motion to amend by deleting the phrase three minutes and replacing that with five minutes, which would allow the public more time, up to a maximum of five minutes, without having to register.
All right, the motion, that amendment has been made. Is there a second? The motion fails for a second.
Mr. Mayor, the Seventeenth Amendment is proposed by me, deals with 1 dash 4A dash 34, a motion to amend by deleting the phrase three minutes and replacing it with five minutes.
All right, the motion has been made. Is there a second? Right, the motion fails for a second.
Mr. Mayor, the Eighteenth Proposed Amendment by me is 1 dash 4A dash 35, motion to delete the last sentence of 1 dash 4A dash 35B as being unnecessary as well as confusing.
All right, it's been asked for the amendment. Do we have a second on that item? Right, it fails for a second.
Mr. Mayor, the Nineteenth Amendment I'm proposing is dealing with 1 dash 4B dash five, closed sessions. And I make the motion to amend the first sentence by adding to the end of the phrase, quotes, unless with a member or members present at that closed session. We need to have that language in there so that we can talk to one another who have been in that meeting, that closed session meeting.
All right, that amendment has been asked. Do we have a second? Right, that fails for lack of a second.
Oh, and my next amendment is dealing with 1 dash 4 dash 7, regular meetings. And I make the motion to amend by deleting and replacing with regular meetings of city councils shall be held on the first four Mondays of each month at council chambers in city hall at 5:30 PM.
All right, that motion, that amendment has been made. Is there a second? The motion fails for a lack of second.
Well, I guess I don't need to do the next one. Okay, and that, because I have two other amendments, but I, I would have to see what happens. But the last two, if, if this council goes to two meetings, the, which they're evidently doing by not seconding my prior amendment, is the dealing with 1 dash 4 dash 3, and that's compensation of mayor and city council members. And the First Amendment is 1 dash 4 dash 3A, and it is a motion to amend the first sentence by deleting $94,000 and replacing with $89,300.
All right, that amendment has been made. A second? The motion fails for a second.
And the Fourth Amendment is, or not the Fourth, but the next amendment and the final amendment that I'm proposing is dealing with 1 dash 4 dash 3B, and it is a motion to amend the first sentence by deleting $9,272 and 22 cents and replacing that with $4,636 and 11 cents.
All right, that motion has been made for that amendment. Is there a second? The motion fails for a second. All right. Counsel, a roll call vote?
No other discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
Well, do you have, you have a question, Mr. Morrissey?
Well, I was just wondering if there was going to be any other discussion by other council members about this. It is, it is a very, very important document.
There, we're seeing no other comments. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein? Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. The motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to receive file considering pass for the second and third times and adopt said ordinance.
Second.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mrs. Jewen?
Yes.
Mr. Bowzen?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mrs. Klein?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Want to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
With the second, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Oppose, we adjourn. Thank you, council.